This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
Where we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiorscitizen.com today.
I'm going to start the beginning of the schedule. You can see I passed out the agenda, and I want to thank you guys for what you do. Especially you guys that serve on the board. My dad's served on the small town school board. The only time people talk to him is when we have a debate. That's just the way it is. So, thank you for what you do. I do pray to you guys. And then he gives you tremendous amount of wisdom. Talking to our insurance man, I said, "You know, right now, if I was in charge, I wouldn't know what to do." But I know value. Bless you guys. Thank you.
Karen, I should go with Mark has tickets.
Yeah, Mark has tickets.
Just see, just see. Thank you, Mike. All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. This time I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. First by Troy. Second by Rick. I'll lose a favor. And that passes six to zero. Mr. Stanley, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united in the civil liberties and justice for all.
All right, thank you, guys. First up, we changed it up a little bit tonight. First up is our early childhood update.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Katie Andreessen, and I am the principal of the Early Childhood Center. And to start off our evening, I have brought a few of our students from Miss Kennedy Lynn's class who are going to do a little drumming for you. One of the best things about being the principal of the preschool is that we learn through play. And it may seem amazing that we hit so many Missouri early learning standards by doing things. So, I'm going to pass this out to you. The sheet I'm passing around gives you a little information about how we take something like drumming and turn it into a really magical piece for us to play data on to make our children grow and develop their own standards. So, Miss Kennedy, I'm going to hand over to you.
Okay. So, we've been working on lots of patterning in our classroom, so some tying in some more of our cognition stuff. So, they're going to kind of go through, and we're going to do some of the patterning through drumming that we've been working on. So, Emmy, what are we going to do first? What kind of pattern? Do you want Miss Kennedy to go first? Okay, ready? Do it with me. Okay, Lysiana, what are we going to do next? What kind of pattern? Okay, so here we go. All right, okay, so what are we going to do next? You want Sophia to go? Sophia, what are we going to do? You want Kinsey to tell us? What kind of pattern would you like to do? We can do pop, cross, pop. Should we do that one? Okay, here we go. Ready? Should we, while we're drumming, what are we counting to? Five, okay, we're counting to five. Ready? Wait, are we going to do loud or soft? Loud, okay, here we go. All right, here we go. Ready? What are we counting to next, Lysiana? Six, here we go, Sophia. Here we go. What are we counting to next? Seven, let's pick a different one. Let's do something higher than that.
Eighty.
Ten, okay, here we go. Ready? All right, thank you, guys, for your drumming.
Hey, you got to throw them up for your fans.
So, just to share a little data with you about the Early Childhood Center, I'm very happy to let you know that attendance can be a really big struggle at the Early Childhood Center. Kids are coming for the first time, they've not been around a lot of other kids or sicknesses. And so, for the first time in a few years coming back from COVID, we have had the highest average daily attendance that we've had. So, we've been very excited to be able to bring that back, to have more time with our kids so that they can learn. Also, we are now at our highest enrollment that we've ever had. I was a little nervous with Lewis joining us and having, you know, 400 somewhere kids on campus that we might not get as many kids in the building. So, we were really excited when we were able to pull up to 178. Our capacity is 180, so we are very, very close. And if it weren't for a few caveats that we have for first steps and special education kids, then we probably would have the building full right now. So, very excited to be able to share that with you as well, continue to grow the program. As far as our language and literacy, we have, are always looking at how can we improve that and make that better. So, you can see in phonemic awareness in blue and letter and word recognition in red, which directly ties to the Missouri learning standards for elementary school, that our kids are K-ready. So, these are our kindergarten students, and they are nearly up to 100, and that was at our middle of the year data. So, we don't even have our end of the year data up there yet to share. So, it looks really good that that projection is going to go right up, right up to 100% being ready for language and literacy in kindergarten. Our second domain I'm going to talk about is the math, the cognition, as well as the science. So, here you see our number sense and math operations. And once again, we have it starting a little lower, and then we're progressing forward. And hopefully, again, we have that end of the year data that will project us up into that 100%. Dr. Miller asked me, like, Katie, how did kids do two years ago, or like last year, as compared to your kids this year? And I said, "That is a, that's a wonderful question." If you notice here that we're just above the 65th percent here to start the year, that's the highest we've ever been. So, our kids that are returning from last year, they're starting and giving us that higher percentage. So, we're very excited about that. That shows that our program is really doing some wonderful things and getting kids moving forward so that we can continue to grow them. We focus a lot on social emotional growth at the Early Childhood Center. We really feel like if we can get them social and emotionally ready to go to kindergarten, that we've really hit the jackpot because that allows our elementary cohorts to just take them and give them all the wonderful knowledge. So, you can see that at the beginning of the year, we were at 50% with our social emotional domains, and we moved it up to the middle of the year, almost to 80%. So, that's also really exciting to see that that amount of growth that it's been made. And once again, we still have the end of the year data, and hopefully, we can bump that up even higher. We don't have map data to compare to, so the data that I have that we can make a comparison to is the Mark Head Start data. So, that's a total of 18 different schools. We happen to be one of those. And you can see, we are the blue line, and the rest, Mark Head Start as a whole is the red. So, you can see that we are performing higher than the, at the middle. The beginning, that's a lot of kids aren't coming in with knowledge, so we're kind of a mixed bag. But by the time you get to the middle of the year, you can see that significant increase as compared to same age peers in the Kansas City area. So, that's also very exciting news for us. We've had a big focus this year on our culture. We want to make sure that, again, adding a lot more people to our campus, that we still keep our spirits high. There's a lot of changes in our building. So, this is just a small representation of some of the activities our staff has done this year to kind of keep that climate and culture high. We make sure to hand out surveys this year for climate and culture, and we added the emphasis to that in our building leadership team to make sure that we had a teacher team of people that were really reaching out to their peers so that we could do activities that we could connect, continue to grow, and just feel really positive about being at the ECC. So, here you can see our teachers in the middle at our literacy night. It was, it's really messy, so you can see we're all exhausted at the end, as well as just some of the other professional development opportunities, being out at the stadium for football night. We partnered, well, didn't partner, we attended Lewis's truck retreat, so we had some people there as well. So, really just trying to make sure that our climate and culture continues to grow and build so that we can positively impact students. We also have a large emphasis on our families. So, it's really important to us that being the very first school that families experience in the school district, that they have the best experience possible so that we can send them right onto elementary to continue to have a really impactful education. So, here's just a few pictures that have been shared from our family events, also our home visits that we do at the beginning of the year to show that parents are coming in. One of the nicest things about our events is that we really focus on the family, and we have families show up. So, it's not just mom and a kid coming to check the box that we went to literacy night. We have whole families showing up. So, that's siblings, it might be cousins, you might even get an aunt and uncle in there that are, that are coming in to help. So, we get a large amount of volume of people into the building to not only showcase what we do at the ECC, but also just have really great experiences, again, to share with the families at the beginning point of their time at the Excelsior Springs School District. That, a couple upcoming events, we have a spring parent teacher conference to coordinate with our last data of the year and to help prepare our kindergarten parents to shift on. They have lots of questions about kindergarten. We do a kicking it with our kids event at Tiger Stadium. That's a focus on male role models. Everybody's invited, but we have lots of great activities out there on the field. We do popsicles on the playground, end of the year event for families to come to the playground. You can swing, they go down the slides, whatever they want to do just to connect with their kids and celebrate the year. And then we've done one math screening where we had over 50 students come. That's our recruitment for next year, but we'll do another one in July to, again, increase our recruitment for next year. That is all that I have tonight. What questions do you have for me?
Is May 16th the popsicles on the playground?
Yes. Come on. We'll get you a popsicle. Any other questions for me?
Great work.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, this time I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent petition. So, first by Darren. Second by Jill. I'll lose a favor. Next up, next up is recognition. First up is Mr. Ruby.
Good evening, everyone. This last weekend was our Skills USA State Leadership Conference and Skills Competition, and we had a bunch of winners, and we wanted to recognize them tonight. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McBea, and he is going to introduce several. Good evening. So, past week, April 4th through the 6th, we was at Skills USA State Competitions in Lynn, Missouri at State Tech College. Took a total of 33 students and four advisors. Appreciate Mr. Goldsmith, Mrs. Marsh, Mr. Bryan, and myself going. In addition, the Career Center Director, Mr. Ruby, and Mr. Smarter came down on Saturday for the awards. Appreciate his support. The Excelsior Springs Area Career Center was one of several schools in the state to attain a relatively rare distinction. We were recognized as Bronze Level Chapter of Excellence. Students competed in a variety of hands-on competitions, worked hard to, sorry, written technical tests, a leadership contest. The students did very well on the trip. They all worked hard to get to state to compete. We're proud of all those state competitors and their accomplishments. I'm going to announce the gold, silver, and bronze medalists. So, gold winners, we had Jacob Goodman and Seth Pace in cybersecurity. Job Skill Demo A and Sheet Metal Tech Info, Madeline Throckmorton from Liberty and Computer Repair, Jacob Goodman in Excelsior Springs. Seth and Madeline, you want to step up a second? So, Seth and Madeline and Jacob are going to be moving on to compete at Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia. Silver winners in Quiz Bowl Team E, we had Skylar Arner from Excelsior Springs, Seth Pace from Lawson, Sophia Hannigan from Liberty North, Drew Wilson from Lawson, Jacob Goodman in Excelsior Springs, Cameron Crane, Liberty, Max Williams, Lawson, and Sheet Metal Tech Info, Jacob Wright from Excelsior Springs. Related Technical Math, Sophia Hannigan from Liberty North, Building Repair Technology, Braden Ledbetter from Liberty North. And then we had one bronze winner in Sheet Metal, Isaiah Manis from Excelsior Springs. Also, a huge thank you to Sophia Swope from Lawson and Cameron Crane from Liberty for representing the Career Center's delegates. They were involved in the decision-making process for next year for Skills USA Missouri and voting delegates for the new state officers. I'd like to draw attention to one of the previously mentioned medalists. We had a student run for a Skills USA State Officer position. There were 17 applicants for seven officer positions, and Madeline Throckmorton from Liberty North, who has enrolled at the Career Center in the HVAC program, was selected as one of the seven officers for the next year. Huge thank you to Dr. Tomlinson and Dr. Bullmore for spending some time working with her to help get her prepared. We know she's going to do great things in the position she is assigned, as her precise state officer position does not yet to be decided. Special, a special thank you to all the Board of Education members and Mr. Ruby for the continued, continued support of the Career Center and Skills USA. Here's one of our plaques. I thought you were going to show it off for the Chapter of Excellence. Any of you guys want to say anything?
I would like to hand you guys this letter with everyone's signature on it, just as a, as a thank you for all of your continued support.
Congratulations, all of you.
Can we get guys picture up here? Come on, guys. Good job. Congratulations.
Now, I have one other recognition I wanted to mention, but I got last, this last minute, so I didn't get a chance to put on the board minutes. But Sophia Swope, right here, was named Region Three Breaking Tradition Secondary Regional Winner. Sophia is a second-year automotive technology student who was nominated for the award by our instructor, Mr. Don Bryan. The Breaking Traditions Awards are sponsored by the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in order to recognize outstanding non-traditional career and technical students and adults that support them. So, among 55 outstanding applications, Sophia's exceptional achievements have earned her well-deserved honor for being a regional winner. So, congratulations. All right, next up is the Classified Employee Recognition. Dr. Mullin.
The please is the board. We, the, we would like to recognize Ms. Rachel Coe, Aramark High School Kitchen Manager and District Chef as the Classified Employee of the Month. She is the Acting District Food Service Manager for Aramark, our last food service manager left to take a different position out of food service in schools. And Rachel has done all things to help keep us rolling, including helping organize many the things that we're doing at the high school to eliminate some of the delinquent pets that we have, but also all the free meals that we've been serving. So, she's kind of been doing two jobs. And it was very admirable when I reached out to Aramark to get some positive things to say about her. They also informed me that she was offered and accepted the job as our new District Food Service Manager. So, we're very excited to have her joining us in that capacity, and then Aramark will work with us to backfill that lead position for the high school and the training of the chef. We have some kind words here about Rachel that I would like to share. For nine years, Rachel has been a vital part of the Excelsior Springs Food Service, shining as chef for the last three years. Her passion for serving and engaging with students to continuously improve the dining experience speaks volumes about her dedication. She masterfully ensures the highest standards of food prep, presentation, and delivery. Her talents have enriched the high school and district, bringing a distinctive mix of care, insight, and commitment. Thank you, Rachel, for your dedication to our Tigers.
All right, next up is MSBA Delegate Report. Have we got a video?
Welcome to the April edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look back at the beginning of MSBA's Spring Advocacy Series. The spring virtual meeting was held on March 13th and featured a presentation by Dr. Stephanie Cuevas, an Assistant Professor of Education at Atala College of Educational Studies at Chapman University in California. She is the co-author of the scholastic book, Everyone Wins: The Evidence for Family-School Partnerships and Implications for Practice. Dr. Cuevas considers it imperative to consider the significant and central role that families play in shaping the educational experiences of students. During the session, she said that although board members aren't involved in the day-to-day of school operations, there are still many ways that they can help promote family involvement.
And I think it's just advocate for it, right? And again, really how are you defining parent involvement, family engagement, and understanding that it is a variety of things, right? It's not just a very typical, we used to call it, you know, moving beyond the big cell, right? That is not just, you know, families doing that, but again, something that folks that are not in the nitty-gritty of schools every day can advocate for is that how do we get creative about developing the educator's capacity to do that? Another way is always, you know, advocate from our funding board, right? So, I think that those are two ways to like really think about, well, what is needed in my local context, district level, or state level? And really, how do we help both educators and families learn how we work with each other, and that's through capacity development, often being professional development, and making a requirement. Like I mentioned before, in a lot of research shows that, you know, I, as a teacher, I as a principal, am expected to make these relationships happen, but I don't know how.
The first luncheon learn of the spring advocacy series featured an interview with Dr. Margie Van Deven, conducted by MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall. The discussion covered a variety of topics, covering many of Dr. Van Deven's experiences, opportunities, and challenges she faced as Commissioner of Education. She explained that regardless of your role in education, staying focused on your why is key to serving.
You know, it is about serving everybody's soup every day. I mean, it just, that, you hear that often throughout our state, but it is, that is the why. And what I have found to be a little bit challenging at the, at the department level, I'm sorry, this is longer than 30 seconds, but it is always about what's best for our kids. And people remind me that it is, I'm much removed from that student in the classroom at Jefferson City. So, what can I do? A lot of times my why shifts to, how do I lift up those we serve, our students, by lifting up those who serve them? You've heard me say that. And our job really at the department is, is how do we put systems or policies in place that help the local leaders do their jobs and in a better way to better serve our kids, help, help them, help our students.
Dr. Van Deven also thanks school board members for their support during her time as Commissioner.
That is probably one of the first things I learned in my role at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and working with school improvement efforts is a critical role that our local school board members play. And I have grown a relationship with many of the local school board members across the state, so thank you for your support, for your professionalism, but also for your friendship throughout, throughout this time.
State Senator Carla Esslinger will be Missouri's next Commissioner of Education beginning in June. Esslinger will continue her work as a state senator until June 1st, when she will join Dr. Van Deven in the Commissioner's spot and begin the transition. The deadline is approaching to set up for your district's Free Emergency Operations Plan Development Tool. MSBA, in partnership with the Department of Public Safety, is offering another school safety improvement program for fiscal year '24, expiring on June 1st of this year. The program funding provides public school districts that did not participate in last year's funding program with one-year-at-no-cost access to MSBA's online Emergency Operations Plan Development Tool, MoEOP. Any Missouri public school district or charter school not using the MoEOP tool should take advantage of this limited-time offer. John McDonald, the Chief Operating Officer of MSBA Center for Education Safety, says that it's more important than ever to have a good emergency operations plan.
I responded to and manage school threats and emergencies for the past 16 years. And what I know to be true is that the school threats of today are more complicated than ever before. And the very best school safety, prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery begins with a robust emergency operation plan. At CES, we believe strongly, like all of you, in the duty to protect our students and staff. And it was with this in mind that we created the web-based Missouri Emergency Operation Plan Tool, also known as MoEOP. The 247 districts across the state have been using for the past year. The MoEOP tool, with your input, will provide you with a safe and secure, web-based, all-hazard school emergency operation plan.
Visit the MSBA website for more information on how to register for your district's free MoEOP tool. Make your plans now to attend MSBA Summer Summit, June 24th and 25th in Branson. Join school board members and leaders from across Missouri to learn about emerging trends and hot topics in education. It's a great opportunity to participate in valuable sessions and to connect with your colleagues from school districts across the state. Also, be sure your board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Summer Summit. Delegates will be electing state officers for the coming year at that meeting. The nominating committee is proposing a slate of officers for consideration, including the offices of President-elect and Vice President. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website. Registration information for the Summer Summit is also posted on the website. And last, but certainly not least, if you are elected to your school board for the first time this month, welcome to school board service. Missouri law requires all school board members to receive 18 and a half hours of training within their first 12 months of service. MSBA's new board member training fulfills this requirement and provides the foundation for becoming an effective board member. The training is free for all new board members. Check the MSBA website for a schedule of training opportunities along with registration information. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting and...
Anything further, Darren?
I miss Brett.
Come back. All right, moving on to Section G Cabinet Reports. First up, academic services, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Colin. Good job.
Good job. So, thank you, Mark Bullmore. Good job. So I wanted to let the board know that right now on cycle is our science curriculum. I know I've spoken a little bit about that. One of, the middle school instructional coach is actually heading that. From her previous job, she actually wrote state science curriculum for the state of Arizona, just happened to be someone that we grabbed up, and she ended up in Missouri. So she's doing an outstanding job working with all of our teachers, not just middle school, but K-12. So everyone is in the process of selecting resources, they're writing their curriculum. In addition to that, they're deciding what it, there's more to a program than a textbook. So especially when you look at science. So I've been going around asking teachers to come up with the cost of everything involved to give a student everything that they need to experience science. For example, if we have, I guess, really, really outdated microscopes, and so if that's part of the curriculum, we need to update that now. I think teachers are used to not asking for those things because they seem expensive, but at the same point, if, you know, my, my job as the CNI person is to make sure that we have a complete curriculum and give them everything that they need. So they're currently not only picking the resource, they're writing the curriculum, and then they're coming up with what it takes to give a student a full hands-on experience through science. Wanted to update you on some star reading scores. What I have in front of you is, this is specific to reading. The students in the red are the percentage at each building who currently are in the 24th percentile or below. So this is a critical need situation where a student is at risk of, I always tell people they're at risk of having their readings, their reading level affect their life long-term is the best way that I can say it. If you're in the 24th percentile or below, that not only is affecting your current reading, but it will continue to affect all of your reading until you can close that gap up. Many of our students are unsuccessful in not just reading. If you're unsuccessful at reading, chances are you're unsuccessful at every subject. So we continually monitor this. Students who hover in between that approaching and at-risk level, sometimes they'll hover there and go back and forth between there. But overall, this number is decreasing a lot since the first of the year. These students, they'll take their final reading assessment in May, and we should be able to have some good growth on how many started a reading success plan and who, how many finished on a reading success plan. So those that finish on a reading success plan, the really good thing about this state program is that the teacher that they're currently with will write a reading success plan, and so the kid hits the ground running on the first day of school the next year. Before, the process was really all about them spending time to get to know a kid and giving more testing, and it, it could take up to a quarter before a kid was really getting the interventions that they need. So that's what we're looking forward to. I actually, when you look, take a look at the middle school, I've been spending some time working with the administrators over at the middle school in discussion of Witten Wisdom, the new reading program that's coming their way. Admin has done an incredible job being supportive and thinking long-term, not just to finish out this year, but really looking three, four, five years in advance. The literacy coach, Jessica Henry, and I are meeting with the current ELA teachers at the middle school once a week to try to not just, we don't want to throw a resource at them without knowing the why behind it. The beauty with the elementary process that we did is we sent teachers to letters training, and so they were so begging for Witten Wisdom because of the training. Letters training is really intensive. It's excellent. It's the best training that I can give a teacher, but the difference, the middle school, it is far too much to ask them to adopt a program and do letters training at the same time. So we're trying to front-load that now, between now and the end of school. And I know Dr. Kaufman has some really good ideas on how to incorporate a lot of that information during professional development throughout. So the next thing I'll show you is math. Again, these numbers are better than they were at the beginning of the year. So although we don't have math success plans, we still, it works to help us target our interventions. It's something that we track data on, something that we're always looking at. One thing that I do want to point out is the at-risk is not this, like, these are not the same numbers as our current math scores. So for example, if you have proficient and advanced and basic and below basic, these are a different set of scores that DESI sets for us. So math scores are actually a little bit higher than this. So saying that we have, it's, it's not accurate to look at Elkhorn and say that we will have 15 students that will, or 15% of the building will score below basic, because the numbers are actually lower per DESI requirement. So again, the, the last math assessment is actually the end of this month, so looking forward to comparing those numbers from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So this is the dirty word going around right now in my department. So we're getting ready to do map and EOC testing. Technology has done an incredible job of getting everything ready. We've got Chromebooks now instead of iPads, so that's a little bit different, getting everything pushed out. And to make things more fun, DESI changed the program on us, and so we prepare for it as best we can and cross our fingers, and we won't know until the kids sign on to take the test if it works, and we've done everything we can, and hopefully it'll work. There's extra days built in, so worst-case scenario, we'll get every kid tested and it's going to be fine, which is what I keep telling myself over and over, it's going to be fine. One thing that I'm always so excited about is Excelsior Springs School District makes sure that every kid can swim. One of the things that we started, I think, my first year here, they had done it before, and I like, I'm just super passionate about it. We're lake people, and we're a body of water people in Missouri, and so every kid who goes through Excelsior Springs School District learns how to swim in the second grade. So swim lessons start in April. We actually purposely put that in the middle of map testing to get their, you know, that's that many more tiny voices to get out of the building while the other kids are testing. So Kim Curtis, our social worker, I tell her, you know, please order extra swimsuits and extra bathing suits. The community center has been incredible partnering with us. They are just as excited to teach kids how to swim as we are to send them. So, any questions?
On the reading success plans, I would assume that those students that are at risk in reading, they've been probably recommended to go to summer school?
Yes, absolutely.
So would summer school teachers have access to those plans then, so they could just continue on with what they've been doing as far as intervention or...
So every reading success plan is through a Google Drive document that I created. DESI didn't send out a program, so I kind of created my own. I was telling Dr. Tomlinson, anytime a parent could, a parent could call me, I could answer the phone, and I, you could give me a kid's name, and I could tell you exactly to the letter, like, what they're working on, what the previous score was, what interventions they are. It's that crystal clear. So absolutely, anyone working in summer school is completely transparent, they can pull it up and hit the ground running. We, we did that because it was so important with tutoring. The same teach, the teachers that are available to tutor aren't necessarily the teachers of the kids who need tutoring, so that's one way that they are utilizing their time. There's kind of some lessons learned with, with our tutoring, so we're going to make a little bit of changes on just the efficiency and the effectiveness of it that we were talking about. It takes a lot of time to prepare lessons to tutor, and so we're trying to come up with committees and extra resources to streamline that so that it's less work on our teachers and they can spend more time with a kid actually providing an intervention than preparing a lesson without a kid in front of them. So it's worked out really well. I think the biggest obstacle is always transportation for some of our kids. Dr. Bullmore does a good job of getting me everything that he can afford, whether it's staffing or, or financial support to get buses back and forth. That's always our biggest obstacle. If I had more buses, I would have more tutoring. But I think that's part of the reason the number is going down, is our, their explicit interventions, because the assessments that we're giving can pinpoint exactly what a kid needs at all times. And I, I mean, literally, a parent could call me and say, what does my kid need to work on? And any of us that had access to it could go to a teacher's class, pull it up, and literally see the last time they had tutoring, intervention, and what they're currently working on. So that was, I think, a bit of a headache when I first got here. The problem-solving team and just kids were getting kind of slipped through the cracks, and it was taking forever to get them an intervention. So I'm super proud of the teachers and the principals. It's hard work giving those kids an intervention. They're doing a great job. I know at the middle school level, the administrators there and I have been really working on how to provide interventions at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level. One thing that you know, being an elementary person, is something happens between fifth and sixth grade, and it's like you wash their hands of them, and they're all around. So...
Same for high school, too.
Yep, exactly.
We've got to look at literacy and how we can support sixth through 12th grade students.
Exactly.
But I'm happy to hear that those success, reading success plans will be available during summer.
Yep.
It would help me as a teacher of a child that goes to the high school.
Yeah, so those recommendations are happening, not just through reading success plans, but I know many of the principals are talking to parents who have chronic attendance issues. And it's sort of like, you need, you really, in order to be ready for the next grade level, you need to attend summer school. So I'm really looking forward to the quality of our summer school as well, to be very, it's just, everything's so intentional. It's not an app that every kid pulls up and tries to learn how to read with an app. It's a teacher sitting in front of a kid, and that's really the only way you can do it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Dr. Miller? Thank you very much. Next up is Human Services, Dr. Ever.
Thank you. So my time spent tonight is going to be taken by three amazing high school student council students. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Reese Odell, Madeline Andreessen, and Addie Ruby. And they're going to talk to you a little bit about an initiative that we've been working on with a partnership with our Excelsior Springs Community Center.
Okay, so we're very excited to talk to you guys about a Special Olympics track-and-field event that we have partnered with the Excelsior Springs Community Center to create. This event is going to be held on May 15th from 4:00 to 7:00 at Tiger Stadium, and it will be available for students, grades 6 through 12, who are Special Olympics athletes. And the reason we're really hosting this event is to just provide inclusion with students from our school who have these different needs and to connect with students from all So we decided that our theme would be superheroes. As you can see on the left, that's our shirt design. And then on the right is our registration form that we sent to 35 districts, and it's completely free for anybody that applies. And then shown on the screen, the next screen, are the events that we decided upon. And these are slightly modified from what a typical high school track-and-field event would look like. You can see this in us doing a softball throw instead of shot put and having walk races alongside the running races. We also included a wheelchair race along with other things. All of these changes were made in order to provide as much inclusion as possible. Any questions?
Thank you for doing that.
Will you give them a little bit of information about what is going to go on in the middle of the field during this event as well?
So we will also have a bounce house for younger kids. It is only six through 12 competing, but if other kids wanted to come, it was included in the registration invite to also include people that are younger than 12.
Yeah, so what's really cool is they, they've done all the work. They, they really truly have done literally every piece of the work. And our partnership with the community center has been so great because we're able to use their connections. They have the connection with the accessible bounce house. They're providing some food trucks for us for the event as well, for spectators. What's really cool is Aramark is going to provide meals for us, for our volunteers. And then we just, Jessie Hall is helping us come up with donors. For every person who competes, we'll get a t-shirt and a medal, and it'll be completely free for every participant. So these ladies have a serious passion for it, and you can see it in the work that they're doing. And so we have our next meeting with the community center tomorrow, so we'll see what the registration, like, how many people have signed up yet, and we'll continue planning from there. But literally, they've done it all.
If you want to volunteer, where do you sign up?
So we are actually probably going to discuss that tomorrow. It has been talked about a little bit, but it should be made soon, and it will be spread on social media, I'm sure, and will probably in town places.
I did this in college. It is the most fun event and worthwhile you will ever experience.
You know, we are, we don't really have any expectation for what we'll deem it as success in terms of numbers this first time. It might be really tiny, we don't know. But our hope is we get the ball rolling again, and we invite families and people to come and play, you know, in the middle of the field, they're going to have back toss and all kinds of just fun things we're going to do as well. So, and then partnering with our track team to help us. And so it really, we're hoping is the start of something that will springboard into like a full, full program. So we're just very excited.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, next up, Operations, Dr. Bullmore.
If anyone listening at home is interested in volunteering for the Special Olympics, you could reach out to Dr. Everett, and she will get you in contact with the right person who wants that student. So please, ladies. If it pleases the board, I would like to give district operations updates for April. So we'll start with human resources updates. So we have five, six positions left still that we are trying to hire, so we almost have a finish line there. We have a Lewis kindergarten teacher, if anyone knows anyone that likes the little bitty ones. Two ECCs over at Dr. Andreessen's place, middle school ELA and special ed position, and the Career Center is still looking for an OTPT teacher. So if you know anyone interested in those positions, have them reach out to the district, visit the website, or reach out to those principals. We'd love to have a conversation. Exit surveys, so this is the time of year that we want to survey employees that may be leaving the district for whichever reasons. This helps us get a better understanding of why individuals and employees may be leaving, and can help us focus our efforts on recruitment and retention of staff members. So it's important to get that survey out compared to regional data and local historical data, and see if our efforts that we're putting in are being successful and where we can channel efforts moving forward. And then also the employee handbook, so this is a little pet project of Dr. Everett's and mine, if she remembers.
I do.
So it hasn't been updated in a couple years, so we just want to go through the employee handbook, make sure all the policies are today, practices, how we handle things in the building, speak with the principals, make sure everything's correct in how we handle things on a daily basis, and then we'll run it by legal and have it ready to go for the new school year next year. So one of our fun projects for the summer.
Are you going to do a series of three?
We will not do a series of three, it will be one very official handbook. Safety security updates for the district. So the safety film project was completed on the windows around the district, so right now we're in a 30-day, not a healing process, but a curing process. So they've been given strict instructions not to mess with the windows, haven't they, Miss Brodmann?
Yes.
So we're working on that, very excited about that project, have that complete, and that was a $200,000 project that was funded 100% by a state grant that Mr. Jenkins got, so we're excited about that. We'll have some, a safety patrol program coming to you guys in just a little bit for approval. We're really excited about that. And Sergeant Nash St. John is back there hiding somewhere, he's very excited to present to you. He's very excited about that program. And then also, the updating of the district safety plans was something that was in, that we talked about at the beginning of the year, something that Mr. Kinsey actually emailed the principals about, and we will be looking at the tool that MSBA has available that you just heard about in the video, so we'll be looking at using that. There's a grant that pays for it for a year, so we need a little bit of analysis to see what that long-term price will be. But we needed to update that safety security plan for the district anyways, and this is a good way to use a state-approved system in order to do that. So we're excited to move forward with that process this summer as well. And then food service, so update just on the free lunch during March and April. Participation has jumped, especially practice. This was the plan, right? We know if kids eat, and they eat healthy, they're going to, they're going to do better than learning, right? So we also have some testing windows that go into the middle of May, so we're just going to go ahead and extend that through the rest of the year. So we're very excited about having that through the rest of the year. It's not something that we can do all the time, but any funds that we make through food service have to be spent in food service, so why not feed our kids, when we know it can have such a great impact on learning? So we're excited about that opportunity. We do know there have been some snafus with billing. We want to apologize that we can't just put a free lunch button at the computer. We want to apologize that we can't just put a free lunch button at the computers and at their kiosks. And so every night, Misty has to go in and clear all of those lunch debts. Obviously, she gets busy with other tasks that she has. And sickness happens and then some of us can't be here. And so sometimes those costs do get, they'll relay overnight. So just give us a second to get those cleared out. Usually within a couple of days, they're all cleared. If you see any issues with your accounts, just feel free to reach out to your building principal and we'll make sure those get cleared. We're really excited what this has provided for our students and continue to provide moving forward for the rest of the year. So that's all the updates I have for Operations.
Any questions?
On the safety and security, like the district plan update?
Yeah.
That involves Raptors on it, correct?
Yeah, we'll still be using, this is a different plan. This is kind of how we address emergencies throughout the district. We will still be using the Raptor plan, the Raptor alerts, all of those things. We'll still be a part of that system.
All right, thank you, Dr. Miller. Next up, Superintendent's report, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, sir. Since we've had spring break in between our last meeting, now I don't have too much to go through, but just a couple of quick things that have popped up since our last meeting. We are going to work on trying to finish the hill at the football stadium. We got the first half of it done last year. Now that the scoreboard's been replaced, we're going to take a look and finish that. It's a lot more problematic than I thought it would be. The hill is just really difficult to find landscaping that will take. So we're looking at some different options, but it might be something like this here. We found, one of the recommendations from the landscaper was to put in a GeoWeb, a little fence that actually kind of holds everything in place on the hill. I don't know what, going with that or not. A couple more landscapers coming in to say, well, we'll get it, pitch some different ideas. But you know, that project's probably going to cost anywhere from, you know, somewhere from $15,000 to $25,000. It's pretty pricey, but at the same time, we need to ensure that's taken care of so that we don't have further erosion or issues down the road. So that's one project going on. We are going to try to finish off the back of that scoreboard. We're going to put some kind of cover over that so it's a little cleaned up and we'll put a backlit tiger head like what's at Lewis and also already at Cornerstone. So hopefully, we'll be able to tie all those things together. There are a number of energy efficiency update projects. I had these on last month, but I kept those up again for you just to see. Starting with our summer plans are really big right now. We're going to go ahead and move forward with the parking lots at Elkhorn and the middle school. There is some work that needs to be done at the high school parking lots as well. Those, that'll have to probably move to next year. We might even have to split that out over two years. It's about $650,000 to redo the parking lot at the high school. Talk about expensive. So we might have to split that in two, if you have that one summer, have it the next summer. It'll just kind of depend on how we're looking with finances. So that's, that's going to be out in the future, but right now, we're going to try to handle the middle school at Elkhorn this summer. So those are kind of some of the main priorities. And I just wanted to remind the board that we're going to have a special tour, VIP tour from Dr. Miller at the new Lewis Elementary coming up on May 1st. And he's, couldn't be more excited to go and help us with the tour. And I think Dr. Miller is wearing the Tiger outfit, if I remember correctly.
You won't know.
That's right.
I'll promise to be carried.
I'm going to carry him.
And that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much. Is that May versus the 5 o'clock?
Four.
Or?
Or as soon as the Lewis team is going to get there from the ECC.
Thereabouts.
Thereabouts.
Moving on to discussion and action items. First up is approval of employment. It's Dr. Tomlinson and Mr. Gray.
You want me to start or are you sure? Go ahead. Well, at that time of year, one of the most important things that we do is take care of benefits for our employees. Salary and benefits make up about 75% of every dollar we spend. All goes towards humans, which is great. It's kind of the purpose of why we're here. But one of the things that we do, and Bill's been so great over the years, is helping us make sure that we have the best benefit package we can possibly provide for our staff. And I know he's got some information about what our renewal would look like this year, what some of the plan offerings are, and kind of tell you a little bit about his comparisons between how the district's doing, maybe even some of your other clients and other books of business. You might give the board maybe an idea of how things have been progressing from your vantage point.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. The last 12 months have not been really good for claims in the school district, which that's what I'm seeing with most of my groups. It's not so much that there's a lot of large claims, it's just utilization. People are seeming to use the health insurance. That's what we, that's the reason we provide it. But on the other side of that, at the end of the year, somebody's got to pay for that. This last year, the increase was approximately 14%. July 1st will be the end of the seventh year that our school has been with MEUHP pool. Including the 14%, the average annual increase over the last seven years has only been 5% a year. So we've had a couple of years where there hadn't been any increases, but this pool, based on my experience with my other groups, has been very good for Excelsor School District. And in my position, 5% average over seven years is really good. Like I said, the other groups that I'm seeing, in the last 12 to 18 months, I've probably had more groups have 20, 25, 30% increases on health insurance, which is just ridiculous, but that's the way that healthcare is going. I mean, you can go to the emergency room and go in and say hi and leave for $2,500. I mean, it's, the costs are just ridiculous. But the school does provide great benefits to your employees. And like I said, this pool has been very good for the school district. I think the school district's been good for the pool and vice versa. Any questions for me?
One of the things that we would ask is that the board approved the recommendation that we increase the cap on our contributions. So we currently contribute $575 a month for each employee to help offset some of those costs for our employees, as we do want to increase our contributions from 575 up to 600. Our dental, our vision, our life, all pretty much stay the same, so our total contribution then go up to $643.37. We would recommend to the board that we increase that cap so that we're able to help employees best afford the insurance as possible.
So, first by Rick, second by Caitlin. Any questions?
Dr. Tomlinson, what does it afford with the change in our financial situation that will probably happen next year coming off of harmless? Is this going to be something long-term and we need to look at some different sustainability models for you? Is this going to be something that you can do anything?
I do, I mean, the health of the program is going to be, is really going to drive this. So as long as the MEUHP as a whole is able to stay healthy, then I think that it really is a good fit for us, for our size. I will say that there's, the changes in healthcare over the last couple of years have been driven almost exclusively through prescriptions. So prescription utilization is up a great deal and it's very specific and very expensive formulary prescriptions. So for instance, a drug maker will go out and spend, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars to perfect a drug, take it to market, and they only get it for a certain number of years before it can become a generic and they can't make money off of it anymore. So you know, you take a look at currently, you've got Magrino and Bozepic. So I want to say that's a big, slowly, 900% increase in the number of people taking those medications and they can be anywhere from $900 to $1,200 a month. That single-handedly right there is about a 10% increase for all your medical expenses total, just over two medications. So is it a great thing? We can argue whether it's good for people, not good for people, all those, but somebody has to pay for it. And so that's what we're seeing as insurance rates overall are have to increase a lot because of prescriptions currently. Do you see anything different in any of your other?
No. And you're correct, the healthcare trend has actually come down a little bit. It's at about seven and a half, eight percent increase per year. Prescriptions are still at 13% increase every year.
So if we're able to average 5%, we're doing one heck of a good job of making sure that our program's doing the best we can with the market that we're working with then. So we've got to take care of our people.
All right, we have first and second. Any further questions or discussions? Here we're done, all those in paper. And I pass the six to zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next up is approval of 24, 25 Career Ladder 2018 approval.
If it pleases the board, I would like to present the 2024, 2025 Career Ladder Plan for your approval. So just a brief overview, the cost to the district next year is very similar to this year. The estimated cost overall for the Career Ladder Plan is about $900,000. Estimated DESI reimbursement, assuming, big caveat here, assuming they appropriate that money in their June budget, is about $540,000, which means the total estimated cost to the district would be about $360,000. They've said that they plan on, they do plan on appropriating this money. It should be there at least for another year. It's something that the state continues to support. One of the ways that we support this, when we instituted Career Ladder last year, is the state didn't just give us an extra $500,000 to cover our end of it. So we pooled together our committee stipends along with our tutoring money in order to help cover some of that cost to the district. And so that's how we've continued to try and fund this and cover the district's part of that cost. And we'll talk about that a little bit in just a second. So stages, so just a brief overview again of Career Ladder, there are three stages. Teachers can be in stage one, two, or three, and it's based on successful years of service. At stage one, there's 50 hours of Career Ladder that can be earned. It's a $1,500 maximum dollars for Career Ladder, which is about $30 an hour. Pretty good part-time job. Stage two, 75 hours, and the maximum dollars earned can be 3,000, which is $40 an hour. And then stage three, which the majority of our teachers are in, would be 100 hours and the maximum dollars would be $5,000, which means $50 an hour for Career Ladder activities. So right now, our 2023, 24 participation, stage one, we have 11 teachers. Stage two, we have 15 teachers. And stage three, we have 139 teachers participating in Career Ladder for a total of 165 of, I think, 179 total that are eligible. So we have a lot of teachers participating. The, the crux of the issue with Career Ladder is that our state application for next year is due before the end of April and our teachers don't even submit this year's plans until May. So it's hard to really evaluate what changes are needed, get a survey, and put all these things into place before we have to apply to the state. So we have a district Career Ladder Committee that runs all of Career Ladder. It's a for-us, by-us type of system. And so they get feedback from teachers throughout the year. They get feedback from the academic department, operations department, what changes we think we need to see moving forward. Building admin, what needs are being served? Are we serving the, the needs of the students and learning in the buildings? So things that we will look at once we are able to do a comprehensive evaluation, once those are all submitted, we compile everything, we'll look at the hours of participation. So are those in direct instruction, there are direct student contact hours, which is, would be like tutoring, intramural, stuff where a teacher is directly interacting with a student. Other hours would be professional development. The PDC has done a phenomenal job of providing professional development opportunities throughout the summer and then again throughout the school year for our teachers to earn those. If our teachers are, are better learners, if our teachers are getting better training, then they're going to be better educators as well. So we're excited about those opportunities. And then indirect student contact hours are able, like family contact or family engagement nights, curricular nights, things like that. And then overall, annual retention rate. So are teachers participating in Career Ladder and then do they stay with our district and do they continue to participate in Career Ladder? Those are all things that we submit to the state once we're done with this year and things that we'll look at, is the Career Ladder Plan being successfully implemented and is it being effective? So those are things that we'll look at and we'll bring a program evaluation at the end of the summer when we can get that data. But again, like I said, the crux of the issue is we have to get this application in before that's due. So the district Career Ladder Team has done a good job of compiling data and getting feedback. So a couple revisions for the Career Ladder Plan moving forward for next year. So the first one that we're really excited about is the timeline. So teachers can now start earning, with this plan is approved by you and approved by the state, teachers will be able to start earning PD hours in June. So previously, it was July, which half the summer is already over and we know there's a lot of professional development that can happen in June. So we're really excited about the opportunity for teachers to be able to count all of the extra learning that they're doing throughout the summer towards their Career Ladder. That can be college classes, that can be all the professional development hours the PDC is planning for them. It can be other meetings that they're going to, if they're going to, I know PBS is sending some teachers down to get trained down there and that happens in June. So they'll be able to count that towards Career Ladder, which we're really excited about widening that timeline. Another thing that we're implementing would be a minimum expectation of part of those hours, 30% of those hours, being expansion of student learning, which can include a lot of things. When we had our current Career Ladder Plan, we did the very minimum of what the state folks had to do to implement a Career Ladder Plan. What we found is when we pooled those committee funds and we pooled tutoring funds, is we thought everyone would be more willing to participate in tutoring, more tutoring would happen at $50 an hour than maybe was happening at what we were paying in the past. And with our reading success plans, with our literacy plan, all the needs that we know our students have and the tutoring needs that we have, we need more tutors. And so the Career Ladder Committee got lots of feedback from administrators, from staff. We looked at area, area Career Ladder plans around us. The majority of plans have anywhere from a 40, 40 or 50% expectation of direct student contact hours. So their, their plan that they are proposing is a 30% expectation of expansion of student learning hours. Those types of activities include providing high-quality tutoring for additional learning opportunities. That can be one-on-one or in a group setting outside the contract time. It can be homebound tutoring, which has been hugely successful the last couple of weeks that we've implemented that. Enrichment tutoring, so reading and art activity is still challenged to build on standards in math and science, or for our Skills USA folks that are spending time outside their contract day, they'll be able to count those as well towards that 30%. A+, so tutoring staff or any staff that's helping students with their A+ hours, they can count those as well towards their Career Ladder. And then academic clubs and competitions that are outside the normal school day, such as Science Olympiad, Math Club, Battle of the Books, Foreign Language Club, STEM Club, all those types of clubs that are based on standards that are being taught in class anyways. So those are the two revisions that we're looking at. Other than that, the state plan or the district plan would be to continue as it was before. We're really excited to try and offer teachers extra money for doing things that we think they were doing in the past and things that are outside of their contract day. And we're really appreciative of the work that they put in and the work that the district Career Ladder Team has put in getting this feedback and creating a new plan. A lot of hours they put in outside the school day. So if there are not any questions, I recommend the approval of District Career Ladder Plan as approved so we can get the application submitted to the state.
So, first by Eric, second by Jill. Any questions, comments?
It's pretty good overall. See if that made a difference.
Yeah. Yep.
All right, all those in favor? That passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is approval of the Safety Patrol Program. Dr. Bolivar and Sergeant Nash St. John come from front and center.
If it pleases the board, I would like to introduce SRO Sergeant Nash St. John to present the Safety Patrol Program, which we are both very excited about. Both Sergeant Nash St. John and our procedures, Dr. Miller, were safety patrol in school.
Fifth grade, Mr. Count.
Fifth grade. So we are really excited to present this opportunity for our students. Without further ado, take your light.
All right. So this is just an overview of the program itself for anybody who doesn't know. Safety Patrol is here to promote a safer environment for arrival and dismissal. The student volunteers who will be fifth graders are tasked with directing children, not traffic, I want to make that a point, to ensure their peers understand and follow traffic safety rules. This is the mission statement I've kind of come up with and basically with that, we just want to explore and develop important leadership skills like teamwork, responsibility, dependability, assertiveness, and cooperation. These are some objectives of the Safety Patrol Program. A couple that I just want to highlight are that it creates positive role models for younger students. I definitely think that's something that could be super practical within the elementary schools. And it's a real-life lab that teaches skills such as teamwork, responsibility, problem-solving, and effective communication. They are responsible for their post, so if they have to miss, they do have to let somebody know. So they do have to reach out like it's a real-life job. Some benefits to the students is the program provides students with leadership roles, enhancing their confidence and responsibility. The teamwork, students work together to ensure the safety of their peers, fostering a sense of cooperation, along with a few others. Benefit to the school, this program helps to promote safety awareness among all students, not just the patrollers. And then it establishes a constructive relationship between students, parents, law enforcement, and the wider community itself. So it's just a good community perception and it bridges the gap between me and them and things like that. And last but not least, this is just a picture of some of the Safety Patrol gear and what that looks like. Dr. Miller and I are probably both very familiar with that. And with that being said, what questions do you have?
So they will not be out there in the middle of traffic?
No, absolutely not.
I'm signing mine up.
Not yet, when he gets to fifth grade.
I've seen some parents who have had questions.
So there is an application process, and there will be a advisor, teacher advisor at every school to aid and run the program. So the teacher advisor and the administrators will sit down and go through the applications and select the students. I've roughly guessed the amount of patrollers we'll need for each school, and so that's kind of how that process will work. And we'll break it down, so we'll have different patrollers for AM, PM, and then that will rotate out at semester as well. So a lot of kids should get the opportunity to do it. Yes. Oh, thanks.
The cost of the program is approximately...
You don't need to tell them that, they didn't ask.
The cost of the program is approximately $400 per school, and that's with a certificate. That's with us having a little banquet or something at the end. We've already got that approved and allocated in the budget. If you guys so choose to approve the program, we think the cost of this compared to all the benefits to both the students and the schools far outweighs $3 that it would cost us.
It made me quiet.
That's probably not a selling...
Great presentation.
That'll be part of Sergeant Nash's training, how to run those reports. So without further ado, I recommend the board approve the implementation of the Safety Patrol Program as presented.
First by Kaylin. Second by Jill. Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Thank you. Great job, Sergeant.
Next time you present, I expect bad boys to be there. All right, last item for the CP for this section of the board meeting is recognition of the outgoing...
I'm just going to get up and do this, I don't know. So Mr. Rick Strack, if you could please join me up here. So being a board member the last six years, it is, I like to tell people, it's the best worst-paid job in the world. Throughout your six years, we've done lots of things that include many of the safety upgrades that we've done throughout the district, as well as pass a bond and a levy to build two brand-new schools and do lots of modifications to the others. There are countless hours that you spend and lots of phone calls I'm sure that you receive. And we all greatly appreciate everything that you've done for our district, our students, and our teachers the last six years.
Thank you. All right, with that, we are going to, before we adjourn, we're going to take a five-minute break before we re-adjourn after we adjourn. So with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn, send aye, 20, 23, 20, 20. Right, this roll call. First by Troy. Second by Kay. Rick?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kaylin?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
We are adjourned for five minutes. Five minutes.